23, it will adopt a fiscal plan and the annexation area meets the contiguity requirements under Indiana law. Again, it's generally located State Road 39 and West County Road 300 North. It will also have assigned Council District 5 to it.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. Further discussion from council this time?
No, sir.
Okay. Then I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2023-28. If you need public comment, please step forward, state your name for the record. Keep comments to three minutes if possible. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2023-28. We will take that up at our next meeting, which will be Tuesday, October 10th, 7:15 p.m., or a day later because of Columbus Day. So, all right. Next up will be ordinance 2023-29, council to consider the LEAP Phase 3 annexation. And really, this is annexation phases 3 through 18, but not Phase 5 that was presented earlier, proposed earlier to council. So this is 3 through 18, not Phase 5. So Ben, and then I assume Scott, you want to speak on this?
Yeah. I'll go through a few slides quickly and just look at each one of the phases all in one presentation, and then that'll allow us to go a little bit more efficiently through each one with the first reading and then the public hearing. So I'll just, I'll present all of these at the same time for you. Again, as the mayor mentioned, I'll just reaffirm that. Ordinance 2023-31, which was the LEAP Phase 5 annexation, that petition has been withdrawn, so that's off, that's off the agenda for tonight. So we'll start with Phase 3, and this is an overall map that shows you both Phase 3 and Phase 4. The area in gray, the large area is, was within city limits already, and that's the Eli Lilly site, or primarily the Eli Lilly site on the north end of town. You can see the interstate just off to the west. So I'll go through, here is the Phase 3 property. It is just east of the Eli Lilly site and north, on the north side of County Road 375 And then here is the collection of parcels that is in Phase 4. It's a collection of 18 parcels that you see here. And again, I should have mentioned, the red lines indicate where the annexation area is contiguous to the existing city limits, just to kind of get a representation of contiguity. So here's a collection of the 18 parcels that are in Phase 4, again, on the north side of the community. And then this will show, I guess, phases 6 through 18 in the various locations. You got, this is, this is the west part of the community and primarily in and around the Phase 2 LEAP annexation area. So we're starting to fill in some of the holes within, within the Phase 2 annexation area, as well as a couple areas that are on the north side of Phase 2 annexation area. So I'll go through these a little more specific here. So we'll skip over Phase 5, because that one has been withdrawn. Phase 6 is, probably should read it on here, is County Road 200 North, is just on the north side of Phase 6, and you can just see State Road 32 just on the very south end of the map. Phase 7 is this collection of five parcels. This is again on the north side of the Phase 2 area. You can see US 52 just to the northeast there, that, kind of that pink diagonal line. So it's on the north end of the Phase 2 area. And this is the very north end of Phase 2. Phase 8 is a single parcel. This, you can see again, just US 52 just on the east side there. Phase 9 is a single parcel, is on State Road 32, is just a little east of County Road 500 West, so this is at the very west end of, of the Phase 2 area. Phase 10 is two parcels, again, on State Road 32. And it's just west of 400 West. Phase 11 is these two parcels that are on the north side of State Road 32, right after the curve, as you're heading west out of town. Phase 12 is the single parcel that's got the letter P next to it, in, on this map. This is actually on, between State Road 32 and the Big Four Trail, right, right north of the curve on State Road 32. And then Phase, Phase 13 is that single parcel right in that same area. Phase 14 is a single parcel that you see highlighted here, it's just south of State Road 32, and it's on 400 West. Phase 15 are these two parcels that are just a little further south on 400 West from the last phase. Phase 16, we're almost done, is on 50 South, again, just a little southwest of where we're just looking here, it's just a little west of 400 West. Phase 17 is a single, long and narrow parcel, it's just on the south side of County Road 25 North. And then, last but not least, Phase 18 is this single parcel that's on, I believe it's 50 North, and it's just west of the curve on, on State Road 32. So those are the various phases, and because they are not contiguous to each other, we need to do them all in separate annexation, which is why you have phases 3 through 18 minus Phase 5, which has been withdrawn. And so those all need to be their own individual annexation ordinances. So that's, that's what's before you tonight. They are 100% voluntary annexations. They do come with you, let me go back to the Phase 3 map for you, actually, in terms of the recommendations for zoning. Almost back. All right. So this is the Phase 3 parcel that was just due east of the Eli Lilly site. This site is actually not in the LEAP concept plan, and is not part of the comprehensive plan for the LEAP district, only the, the future land use map. So this, this one, because it's not supported by the, the concept plan for the LEAP district, and also not supportive in the LEAP district with our zone, our comprehensive plan, we've, the Plan Commission did actually recommend for the SF, Single Family Residential Zoning Classification, for this parcel. If you recall, this is actually the area where the bypass road is going to be constructed for Eli Lilly. It'll actually traverse through this property and then make a curve to the west, and then head up to 450 North. So this, this parcel right now, the only, the only plan for it is for that bypass road. So because it is not supported by the LEAP concept plan and our comprehensive plan for the LEAP district, we have recommended the SF, Single Family Residential Zoning Classifications. All of the remaining parcels are within the LEAP district concept master plan, and also are supported in our comprehensive plan by the LEAP district future land use. And so we have, the Plan Commission has recommended unanimously in all cases for the LEAP PUD zoning district to be assigned to each one of these annexations. That's all I've got for a presentation. Any questions for me? And I'll turn over to Scott for a quick preview as well.
Any questions for Ben from council?
Nothing for me.
Yep.
Do you want your presentation?
Yeah. That's all, that's all I need. Let me... Yep. Evening, Scott Alexander, outside council for IEDC. I just wanted to add some context, a little review, and be very concise about that. What you're going to see on the screen is the concept plan that we have been operating under. Just for your review, that's around 8,000 to 9,000 acres. We don't have all of that property under control, and we may not ever, ever get all of it under control, but we do have the majority of it under control and enough to have critical mass to go forward with the LEAP district. So that's the concept plan that we're operating under. Today, we have, of course, about 600 acres that have been conveyed to Eli Lilly for its project. We have 6,100 acres that are in the city limits and subject to the PUD zoning classification. And then today, we're asking for the first reading on about 460 additional acres to kind of fill in the puzzle pieces. So after these series of annexations occur, will be around 6,600 acres that will be available in the city and zoned, PUD zoning classification, thus the critical mass to really pitch and discuss with these innovative users. And I can tell you, today, I, was drafting negotiation documents with an innovative user. So those, those are active, ongoing discussions related to Project LEAP. Any questions for you, for me?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Scott.
I figure maybe just for efficiency sake, I mean, we'll have to go through each one of these individually, have Rob read them, open the public hearing, and then move right on to the next one, just to kind of go through these quickly, if you need me to pull back up the map as we go through them, just so everybody knows which one we're talking about.
That might be helpful, just so we can...
I can do that.
Yep. Yep. So we'll start with ordinance 2023-29. This is the Phase 3.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. Council, as Mr. Bontrager indicated, you'll, you'll hear a theme here, so I'll try to hit, hit the highlights with respect to each one of these. LEAP Phase 3 annexation area consists of one parcel containing a total of approximately 14.19 acres owned by one landowner, and that's all described in Exhibits A and B. The council finds that 100% of landowners comprising LEAP Phase 3 annexation have signed and filed a voluntary annexation petition with this council. As authorized under the city's UDO, this LEAP Phase 3 annexation area will be assigned Single Family Residential Zoning Classification. The City Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission held its public hearing on September 18, 2023, and forwarded docket 23-62 to this council, the favorable recommendation to assign Single Family Zoning Classification. This council will hold a public hearing. It will adopt a fiscal plan, and it has determined after due consideration that this annexation satisfies the contiguity requirements set forth in Exhibit C. Therefore, again, this Phase 3 annexation area that is described in Exhibits A and B is eligible for annexation. It meets the contiguity requirements under Indiana code. It will be assigned, Council District 3, and the LEAP annexation area is assigned Single Family Residential Zoning.
Thank you, Rob. Ordinance has been read. At this time, I'll open the, open the public hearing for ordinance 2023-29. If you need public comment, please step forward, state your name for the record, and also keep comments to three minutes if possible. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2023-29. That ordinance is round our first reading. We'll take it up for second reading on Tuesday, October 10th, at our next meeting. Next will be ordinance 2023-30. This is LEAP Phase 4.
Thank you, Mayor. Council. The LEAP Phase 4 annexation area consists of 19 separate parcels, which contain approximately 157.6 acres owned by seven landowners. It's all described in Exhibits A and B. The council finds that 100% of landowners comprising Phase 4 annexation area have signed and filed a voluntary annexation for petition to this council. As authorized by the city's Unified Development Ordinance, there will be an assignment of the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification. The Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission held its public hearing on September 18, 2023, and forwarded its docket with a favorable recommendation to assign the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification to this area. There will be a public hearing, and this council will adopt a fiscal plan. It is determined after due consideration that this area satisfies the contiguity requirements as set forth in Exhibit C. Therefore, this council finds that the LEAP Phase 4 annexation area, again, described in Exhibits A and B, is eligible for annexation. It meets the contiguity requirements under Indiana law, and the LEAP annexation area is assigned, Council District 3. And again, it will have the Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification.
Thank you, Rob. This time, I open the public hearing on ordinance 2023-30. If you need public comment, please step forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments to three minutes if possible.
My name is Greg Richards. I live at 1325 West 300 North, along with my wife, my wife Kathy. She is a fourth-generation Boone County resident. I am not. We've lived there for over 31 years and raised our family in that, in that home. And my wife runs a business out of that, out of a pole barn we had built in 2007. We and my father-in-law, mostly him, built my wife a dream custom kitchen for that house in 2014. We're nearing retirement age, but still planning on staying in our home. Honestly, we're not in favor of this project, but realize there's very, very little we can do, so we're trying to minimize the damage to our lives. After the events of the last month, I felt I had to speak. A number of things have happened that compel me to speak my mind about the way we and our neighbors are being treated. First, we were overjoyed to hear that NDOT selected the preliminary alternative for the interchange that routed the road north of us, and then joined 300 east, or 300 north east of us, and we, we and our neighbors, we felt safe. Then we went to the public information meeting for the interchange project and found that the preliminary alter, preliminary alternative had changed before the public had even had a chance to comment on it. The tail end of that project, of that alternative, the east end, that ran north of our house is now labeled as Phase 2 TBD on the map. When questioned, NDOT staff stated that part was up to the locals, since that wasn't part of a state route. So we went from feeling pretty secure to fearing for, fearing for our future again. Second, the very next day, we got a certified letter about this annexation. If I had known about the annexation prior to the information meeting, my questions would have been much different. It doesn't take a genius to understand what the combination of this annexation and the change to the interchange, interchange project, that alternative allows the state, the city to do. Third, we know of neighbors who have attempted to contact the state's realtor, the IEDC's realtor. They aren't answering or returning phone calls. Some of them are actively trying to reach an agreement with the state, but they're being stonewalled, and no response. Fourth, as we saw on the conceptual map, we found out that we are, my home is now available for advanced manufacturing. How's, how's that possible? It shouldn't be too hard to understand why we don't trust anyone right now. We're being kept in the dark, information is being withheld, and the lack of transparency has been unbelievable. I understand the necessity to keep prospective clients' information secret, but why is there so much secrecy regarding everything else on this project? We and our neighbors feel like we, we can't make any decisions regarding our future. We can't sell our home, we can't make any plans, do any home improvements, or repairs, anything like that. We're trapped. This is the Midwest. I grew up here and was taught that people treated one another fairly and honestly, and I'm, I have reason, serious reason to doubt that now. I would like to respectfully request that the council vote no on this annexation, at least until some answers are forthcoming. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2023-30. That ordinance will be up for second reading at our next meeting, which will be Tuesday, October 10th, at 7:15 p.m. Next will be ordinance 2023-32, which is Phase 6. Rob?
Thank you, Mayor. Council. Ordinance 2023-32 concerns Phase 6 annexation area that consists of two parcels totaling 73.41 acres that's described in Exhibits A and B. This council finds that 100% of landowners comprising Phase 6 annexation area have signed and filed a voluntary annexation petition with this council. As authorized by the city's Unified Development Ordinance, this Phase 6 annexation area will be assigned the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification. The City Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission held its public hearing on September 18, 2023, and forwarded its docket with a favorable recommendation to assign the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification to this area. This council will hold its public hearing. It will adopt its fiscal plan in accordance with Indiana law. This council is determined after due consideration that the annexation area satisfies the contiguity requirements under Indiana law set forth in Exhibit C. Therefore, be it resolved that the LEAP Phase 6 annexation area described in Exhibits A and B is eligible for annexation into the city. It meets the contiguity requirements under Indiana law. The Lebanon annexation area is assigned, Council District 3. And again, it will be assigned the Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification.
Thank you, Rob. This time, I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2023-32. If you need public comment, please step forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments to three minutes if possible. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on ordinance 2023-32. That ordinance will be on second reading at our next council meeting, October 10th, at 7:15 p.m. Next will be ordinance 2023-33, which is Phase 7.
Thank you, Mayor. Council. Ordinance 2023-33 is the Phase 7 annexation that consists of five separate parcels totaling approximately 180.76 acres. That's all described in Exhibits A and B. This council finds that 100% of the landowners comprising the Phase 7 annexation area have signed and filed a voluntary annexation petition with this council. As authorized by the city's Unified Development Ordinance, this council has assigned the Phase 7 annexation area to the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification. City Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission held its public hearing on September 18, 2023, and forwarded its docket to this council with a favorable recommendation to assign the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification. Pursuant to Indiana code, this council will hold a public hearing. It will adopt a fiscal plan, and it has determined after due consideration that this annexation satisfies the contiguity requirements under Indiana law set forth in Exhibit C. Therefore, be it resolved that this council finds that the Phase 7 annexation area that's described, again, in Exhibits A and B, is eligible for annexation into the city, that it meets the contiguity requirements under Indiana code, and that the LEAP annexation area is assigned to Council District 3. And then further, again, that the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification will be assigned to the Phase 7 annexation area.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. Ordinance has been round our first reading. If you have, I'll now open the public hearing on ordinance 2023-33. If you need public comment, please step forward, state your name for the record, and make any, please keep any comments to three minutes if possible. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2023-33. We'll take that up at our next council meeting, October 10th, for second reading. All right. Next will be ordinance 2023-34, Phase 8.
Thank you, Mayor. Council. 2023-34, Phase 8 annexation consists of one parcel containing approximately 79.84 acres that's described in Exhibits A and B. This council finds that 100% of the landowners comprising Phase 8 annexation area have signed and filed a voluntary annexation petition with this council. Pursuant to the city's Unified Development Ordinance, this council assigns the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification. City Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission held its public hearing on September 18, 2023, forwarded its docket to this council with a favorable recommendation, again, assigning the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification to this area. In accordance with Indiana code, this council will hold a public hearing and adopt a fiscal plan, and it has determined that this annexation satisfies the contiguity requirements under Indiana code as set forth in Exhibit C. Therefore, be it resolved, this council finds that the LEAP Phase 8 annexation area described in Exhibits A and B is eligible for annexation into the city. It satisfies the contiguity requirements under Indiana code, and it is assigned to Council District 3. And further, will have the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification.
Thank you, Rob. Now open the public hearing on ordinance 2023-34. If you need public comment, please step forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments to three minutes if possible. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2023-34. That will be taken up for second reading at our October 10th meeting, which will be at 7:15 p.m. Next will be ordinance 2023-35, Phase 9.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Phase 9, 2023-35, is an annexation area that consists of one parcel containing approximately 3.31 acres described in Exhibits A and B. This council finds that 100% of the landowners have signed and filed a voluntary annexation petition with this council. As authorized by the city's Unified Development Ordinance, this council assigns the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification to this area. The City Lebanon Plan Commission held its public hearing on September 18, 2023, forwarded its docket to this council with a favorable recommendation to assign the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification. This council will hold a public hearing required by Indiana code and adopt a fiscal plan. This council is determined that this annexation satisfies the contiguity requirements under Indiana law pursuant in its described in Exhibit C. Therefore, be it resolved, this council finds that Phase 9 annexation area described in Exhibits A and B is eligible for annexation into the city. It satisfies the contiguity requirements pursuant to Indiana law, and it is assigned, Council District 3, and will further have the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification.
Thank you, Rob. On this ordinance here, so just from a contiguity perspective from council districts, actually, this needs to be District 2. Prior, we've been assigning everything south of State Road 32 as District 2, not District 3. That, I'm looking at you, Ben. Is that correct? I mean, from my understanding, that's correct? Since this is just, I mean, the only thing it touches is on 32, so it would need to be District 2, not District 3, so it's not contiguous, so it'd be contiguous.
Got you.
Okay. So we need a motion to amend ordinance 2023-35 to assign to Council District 2, not District 3.
Change ordinance 2023-35 to Council District 3 from 2, or from...
2, from 3.
From 2 to 3.
Yep. Thank you. We have a motion, is there a second?
From 3.
3, 2. From 3 to 2.
Yeah. 3 to 2.
Yes. We're all clear? Going to District 2. Going to Keith. Okay. Motion, a second?
Second.
All in person, aye?
Aye.
Supposed, okay. That ordinance is amended, not adopted, just amended. At this time, then, I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2023-35. If you need public comment, please come forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments to three minutes if possible. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on ordinance 2023-35. We will take that up at our next meeting, October 10th, at 7:15 p.m., for second reading. Next will be ordinance 2023-36, Phase 10.
Thank you, Mayor. Council. Again, this ordinance, 2023-36, Phase 10 annexation area consists of two parcels containing approximately 1.91 acres described in Exhibits A and B. This council finds that 100% of the landowners comprising Phase 10 annexation area have signed and filed a voluntary annexation petition with this council. As authorized by the city's Unified Development Ordinance, this council shall assign the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification. The City Lebanon Plan Commission held its public hearing on September 18, 2023, and forwarded its docket to this council with a favorable recommendation, assigning the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification to this area. In accordance with Indiana law, this council will hold a public hearing and will adopt a fiscal plan. This council has determined that this annexation satisfies the contiguity requirements under Indiana law as described in Exhibit C. Therefore, be it resolved, this council finds that the Phase 10 annexation area described in Exhibits A and B is eligible for annexation into the city. It satisfies the contiguity requirements pursuant to Indiana law. It will be assigned, Council District 3, and again, it will be assigned the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. Ordinance has been read. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2023-36. If you need public comment, please come forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments to three minutes if possible. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2023-36. We'll take that up at our next meeting, October 10th, for second reading. Next will be ordinance... Next will be ordinance 2023-37, LEAP Phase 11.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, ordinance 2023-37, the Phase 11 annexation consists of two separate parcels containing approximately 79.65 acres, described in Exhibits A and B. This council finds that 100% of the landowners comprising the Phase 11 annexation area have signed and filed a voluntary annexation petition with this council. As authorized by the city's Unified Development Ordinance, this council shall assign the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification to this area. The City of Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission held its public hearing on September 18th, 2023, forwarded its docket to this council with a favorable recommendation to assign the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification. This council will conduct a public hearing, it will adopt a fiscal plan, and it has determined that this annexation satisfies the contiguity requirements described under Indiana law and described in Exhibit C. Therefore, be it resolved, this council finds that the Phase 11 annexation area described in Exhibits A and B is eligible for annexation into the city. It satisfies the contiguity requirements under Indiana law, shall be assigned to Council 3 District, and it shall be assigned the zoning, the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification.
Thank you, Rob. Ordinance been read on first reading. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2023-37. If you have any public comment, please step forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments to three minutes if possible. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on ordinance 2023-37. That will be up for second reading at our next meeting, October 10th, which is Tuesday, at 7:15 p.m. Next will be ordinance 2023-38, Phase 12.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Ordinance 2023-38, the Phase 12 annexation area consists of one parcel containing approximately two acres, described in Exhibits A and B. This council finds that 100% of the landowners comprising this annexation area have signed and filed a voluntary annexation petition with this council. As authorized by the city's Unified Development Ordinance, this council shall assign the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification to this area. City of Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission held its public hearing on September 18th, 2023, forwarded its docket to this council with a favorable recommendation to assign the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District. This council will conduct a public hearing pursuant to Indiana law and adopt a fiscal plan. This council has determined that this annexation satisfies the contiguity requirements under Indiana law in which is described in Exhibit C. Therefore, this council finds that the Phase 12 annexation area described in Exhibits A and B is eligible for annexation into the city. It satisfies the contiguity requirements pursuant to Indiana law, shall be assigned Council District 3, and its zoning will be the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification.
Thank you, Rob. At this time then, I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2023-38. If you have any public comment, please step forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments to three minutes if possible. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2023-38. That ordinance will be up for second reading at our council meeting on October 10th, at 7:15 p.m. Next will be ordinance 2023-39, LEAP Phase 13 annexation.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Again, ordinance 2023-39, Phase 13 annexation area consists of one parcel containing approximately 4.66 acres, described in Exhibits A and B. This council finds that 100% of the landowners comprising this Phase 13 annexation area have signed and filed a voluntary annexation petition with this council. Pursuant to the city's Unified Development Ordinance, this council shall assign the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification to this area. City of Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission held its public hearing on September 18th, 2023, and forwarded its docket to this council with a favorable recommendation to assign the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District to this area. This council will conduct a public hearing pursuant to Indiana law and adopt a fiscal plan. This council has determined that this annexation satisfies the contiguity requirements under Indiana law in which is described in Exhibit C. Therefore, be it resolved, this council finds that the LEAP Phase 13 annexation area described in Exhibits A and B is eligible for annexation into the city. It satisfies the contiguity requirements pursuant to Indiana law, and it shall be assigned to Council 3 District, as well as the zoning, the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification.
Thank you, Rob. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2023-39. If you have any public comment, please step forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments to three minutes if possible. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2023-39. That ordinance will be up on for second reading, October 10th, at 7:15 p.m. All right, next will be ordinance 2023-40, Phase 14.
Thank you, Mayor. Council ordinance 2023-40, the Phase 14 annexation consists of one parcel containing approximately 26.77 acres, described in Exhibits A and B. This council finds that 100% of the landowners comprising this annexation area have signed and filed a voluntary annexation petition with this council. As authorized by the city's Unified Development Ordinance, this zoning shall be the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District zoning. The City of Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission held its public hearing on September 18th, 2023, forwarded its docket to this council with a favorable recommendation to assign the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification. This council will conduct its public hearing pursuant to Indiana law and adopt its fiscal plan. This council has determined that this annexation satisfies the contiguity requirements under Indiana law, which is described more particularly in Exhibit C. Therefore, be it resolved, that this council finds the LEAP Phase 14 annexation area described in Exhibits A and B is eligible for annexation into the city. It satisfies the contiguity requirements under Indiana law, and it shall be assigned Council District 3. Are we going to amend?
Well, if...
And it will have the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification.
Okay, so this one also needs to be amended to Council District 2 as well. Would entertain a motion to amend ordinance 2023-40 to reflect a change from Council District 3 to Council District 2.
Council District from 3 to 2 for 2023-40.
We have a motion to amend, there are a second? Second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Supposed. That is amended. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2023-40 as amended. If you have any public comment, please come forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments to three minutes if possible. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2023-40. We'll take that up for second reading at our next meeting, October 10th, at 7:15 p.m. Next will be ordinance 2023-41. Council will consider LEAP Phase 15.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, Council. Ordinance 2023-41, the Phase 15 annexation consists of two parcels containing approximately 8.7 acres that are described in Exhibits A and B. This council finds that 100% of the landowners comprising Phase 15 annexation area have signed and filed a voluntary annexation petition with this council. As authorized by the city's Unified Development Ordinance, this area shall be assigned the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification. City of Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission held its public hearing on September 18th, 2023, forwarded its docket to this council with a favorable recommendation to assign the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification for this area. Pursuant to Indiana law, this council shall hold a public hearing and adopt a fiscal plan. This council has determined that this annexation satisfies the contiguity requirements under Indiana law in which is more particularly described in Exhibit C. Therefore, be it resolved, this council finds that the Phase 15 annexation area described in Exhibits A and B is eligible for annexation into the city. It satisfies the contiguity requirements by Indiana law, and it shall be assigned Council District 2. And upon recommendation, this area shall have the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification.
Thank you, Rob. Ordinance been read on first reading. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2023-41. If you have any public comments, please step forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments to three minutes if possible. Council District 2? Amendment?
Well, I mean...
Redder does 2.
He's Redder's, it's Redder's 2.
Redder does 2?
Yeah. So it's, I mean, again, anything south of 32, I'll look out for that one little piece where there's, would be contiguous if it wasn't, it's going to be District 2. So if it's reflected in the words wrong, we're cleaning that up as we go. So, I mean, we can make a motion to amend it if that's preferable, but it would be Phase 2 on the, or District 2 on the final, if we write that way. Whatever's easier for you guys. Motion to amend?
I'll make the motion that we, ordinance number 2023-41, for the district, go from number 3.
Okay.
Second.
No, second. Has he given me to him?
Mike seconded Keith, he'll third. All in favor of amending, say aye?
Aye.
Supposed. That ordinance has now been amended. At this time then, I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2023-41. If you have any public comment, come forward, state your name for the record, three minutes Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2023-41. That ordinance will be taken up for second reading at our October 10th meeting at 7:15 p.m. Next will be ordinance 2023-42, Phase 16.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Ordinance 2023-42, the Phase 16 annexation area consists of one parcel containing approximately 3.38 acres, described in Exhibits A and B. This council finds that 100% of the landowners comprising this area have signed and filed a voluntary annexation petition with this council. As authorized by the city's Unified Development Ordinance, this shall be assigned the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification. City of Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission held its public hearing on September 18th, 2023, forwarded its docket to this council with a favorable recommendation to assign the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification to this area. This council shall conduct a public hearing required by Indiana law and adopt a fiscal plan. It has determined that this annexation satisfies the contiguity requirements under Indiana law and is more particularly described in Exhibit C. Therefore, be it resolved, this council finds that the LEAP Phase 16 annexation area described in Exhibits A and B is eligible for annexation into the city. It satisfies the contiguity requirements pursuant to Indiana law, and it shall be assigned Council District 3, as well as it'll have the zoning classification of LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification.
Okay, this also needs a motion to amend from 2 to 3, or from 3 to 2, excuse me.
I didn't hear that.
I need a motion to amend from District 3 to District 2.
I'll make a motion, we change ordinance number 2023-42 from District 3 to District...
Motion to amend, there are a second?
Second.
Second from Morris. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Supposed. That ordinance has been amended. At this time then, I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2023-42. If you have any public comment, come forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments to three minutes if possible. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2023-42. We'll take that up for second reading at our October 10th meeting at 7:15 p.m. Next will be ordinance 2023-43. This is Phase 17.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Ordinance 2023-43, the Phase 17 annexation area consists of one parcel containing approximately 1.41 acres, described in Exhibits A and B. This council finds that 100% of the landowners comprising this area have signed and filed a voluntary annexation petition with this council. As authorized by the city's Unified Development Ordinance, this area shall be assigned the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification. City of Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission on September 18th, 2023, held its public hearing and forwarded its docket to this council with a favorable recommendation to assign the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification to this area. This council shall hold a public hearing in accordance with the Indiana law and adopt a fiscal plan. This council has determined that this annexation satisfies the contiguity requirements pursuant to Indiana law in more particularly described in Exhibit C. Therefore, this council finds that the LEAP Phase 17 annexation area described in Exhibits A and B is eligible for annexation into the city. Satisfies the contiguity requirements pursuant to Indiana law, and it is assigned Council District 3, as well as the zoning shall be the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District zoning.
Thank you, Rob. This also needs an amendment as well.
Make a motion to amend 2023-43 from 3.
A motion to amend, there are a second?
Second.
Second from Sierra. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Supposed. That is amended. To make sure you guys weren't falling asleep, you know, to keep you guys engaged with it.
Sure.
All right, at this time then, I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2023-43. If you have any public comment, please come forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments to three minutes if possible. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2023-43. We'll take that up at our next meeting, October 10th, at 7:15 p.m., for second reading. All right, and finally, we have ordinance 2023-44, Phase 18.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Ordinance 2023-44, Phase 18 annexation consists of approximately .3, or .83 acres, described in Exhibits A and B. This council finds 100% of the landowners comprising this area have signed, filed a voluntary annexation petition pursuant to Indiana law. This council further finds that pursuant to the city's Unified Development Ordinance, that this area shall be assigned the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification. City of Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission held its public hearing on September 18th, 2023, and forwarded its docket to this council with a favorable recommendation to assign the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District to this area. This council shall hold a public hearing pursuant to Indiana law and adopt a fiscal plan. It has determined that this annexation satisfies the contiguity requirements pursuant to Indiana law and is further described in Exhibit C. Therefore, be it resolved, this council finds that the LEAP Phase 18 annexation area described in Exhibits A and B is eligible for annexation into the city. It satisfies the contiguity requirements pursuant to Indiana law and shall be assigned Council District 3, and it will have the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District Zoning Classification.
Again, finally, this one also needs an amendment from District 3 to District 2.
I'll make a motion that we change ordinance number 2023-44 from District 3 to District...
The motions are a second?
Second.
Second from Brent. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Supposed. That has been amended. At this time then, I'll open the public hearing on 2023-44. If you have any public comment, please step forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments to three minutes if possible. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2023-44. That concludes what I have for new business. At this time though, I will, if there are any public comment, general public comment, however many annexations, if there's any general public comment, feel free to step forward. Not a public hearing, but you can have comments if you have any thoughts. Not a public hearing, but you can have comments if you have any thoughts. Any other new business from council?
Question from Mr. Alexander. Do you have any response or comments to Mr. Richards' public opinion?
As I understand it, Mr. Richards indicated that he had reached out to IEDC's Realtors to engage in discussions. You saw me emailing over here while Mr. Shine was reading, and I've emailed those Realtors to find out what contacts have been made or not made, et cetera, to follow up on that, and would invite Mr. Richards, if you had any questions, feel free to contact me directly, and I'll get the answers that he needs.
Thank you.
Anything else from council? New business?
No.
Any announcements or discussion? Okay, move on to claims. Would entertain a motion concerning the claims?
Move we pay the claims.
Motion to pay the claims, is there a second?
Second.
That's heard Sierra. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Supposed. All right. Would entertain, oh, yeah, for the public watching and the council as well, if you guys have any questions. At the Board of Works, we did approve, set the trick-or-treat hours officially, October 31st, 6 to 9 per tradition, so officially set now, so you can tell your friends. Good announcement. Okay. Without any further business, would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I may motion adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Supposed. All right, our next city council meeting will be Tuesday, October 10th, at 7:15 p.m. We are adjourned.